I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. So Kevin, I have a couple of questions for you. You're at Kingsford Elementary.
Yes.
What's your favorite subject?
Math.
Math, very good. Any particular type of math?
Um...
Just all of it?
Algebra.
Algebra, very good, very cool. And what do you want to do when you grow up?
Be an actor.
An actor?
An actor, woo!
Very good. And you have somebody with you here that you'd like to introduce?
Yes.
Please, is he introducing you, please stand?
Ms. Bezera, my dad, my mom, and my little sister, my little cousin.
Very nice. Well Kevin, thank you very much, you did a wonderful job, and if you see Ms. Reynolds here, she'll fix you up with part-time work as an actor.
Who's your favorite actor? Whose movies you like?
Um, Harry Potter movies.
Oh, of course. Very good.
I can see some Wizard.
All right, thank you, thank you Kevin. So this March 19, 2019 school board meeting in Polk County is called to order. Let's see, Madam Superintendent, do we have any revisions to the agenda?
Yes, we do. Item C9, February 12, 2019, roundtable discussion minutes removed. Item C46, recommendations for non-instructional personnel actions, replace backup. That concludes the revisions for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the March 19, 2019 school board meeting agenda as revised.
Second?
So the motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is acceptance of the March 19, 2019 school board meeting agenda as revised. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Superintendent, we have some special recognitions?
Yes, we do, and I'm trying to get to that tab. I don't have a tab in here. I don't have a tab. Special recognitions. Susan has it. She didn't put my special tab on the top, so I had to go through all the papers. I would like to ask school board member Billy Townsend to please step to the front for our special recognition. With Jan Paramah, and I hope I'm saying it correctly, with the Polk County Historical Commission has a special presentation for Union Academy. Parham?
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, and school board members, I am Jan Parham with the Polk County Historical Commission, appointed by the Polk County Board of County Commissioners, and I am here tonight to bring forth several people that we have that are going to speak after me in reference to the Union Academy marker. But I would specifically like to take the time to thank the principal of Union Academy and his staff for their assistance with bringing forth this application to the school board, and school board staff that helped, I mean, in a professional manner, I just can't describe how much, you know, they really helped me. So I just want to say thank you, and then also to recognize Ms. Fortney because Union Academy is within her district, and also recognize Marissa for her assistance. So I'm not going to take up much time, but I just wanted to say that and to thank everyone, but the people coming after me are going to talk more about the project.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Schlossky, I'm the principal of Union Academy. Last year, I got a call from Ms. Parham, and she wanted to begin this process of having our site marked for the historical value that is there. One of the reasons that that job was so attractive to me was not only the school as it is now, but the history and the wealth that comes with that history of that school. I was well-versed in the school prior to even applying. That was what was important to me. As I got to the school and started to meet the people who not only still work and are involved at the school, Ms. Grimes, for instance, a student at the school and still working at the school, Mr. Riley, Charles at the school, a lot of great people who make that school as valuable as it is historically, as it is currently, and academically to our county and to the students of our area. I appreciate the opportunity to serve as a principal at Union Academy, and I hope to continue to do so for as long as they'll let me be there, as long as Ms. Bird will let me be there. I'm always questioning whether it's going to be another day or two. But I appreciate it, she said it there too. I won't make plans in the past of the weekend. I appreciate that opportunity and Ms. Parham's dedication to making sure that we note the importance of that site. Thank you for your time, and we'll bring forward the next speaker.
My name is Lloyd Harris, and I am the historian to the Polk County Historical Commission, and I'm the fellow that makes sure when applications come forth that everything that goes on the marker is historically accurate. So, we are pleased and we want to thank the School Board of Polk County and Union Academy for allowing us, in partnership with the Union Academy Alumni Association, to place on the grounds of Union Academy a four-foot by three-foot historical marker. The Polk County Historical Commission has had a marker committee dating back to the 1950s, of one of our purposes, of course, is to mark historic sites and to tell the story of Polk County's grand and rich heritage. Union Academy was an African-American high school and school from 1897 to 1969, when it was amalgamated with Barto High School, well, actually Summerlin Institute to create Barto High School. The legacy of the school, however, dates all the way back to the mid-1860s, making Union Academy the premier African-American school in this county. And with that in mind, we wanted to mark this historic school because Union Academy's legacy is rich and great with a myriad of graduates, but it's also rich and great in the fact that it continues today with that great heritage of producing only excellence. And so with that in mind, I'd like to close simply, I think all of you have our historical packet that relates the grand history of the school dating back to 1897 and the different points of growth. It was, it is the premier African-American high school in its day, the first graduate was in 1928, and then, of course, it went into becoming a international baccalaureate magnet school of choice. I would like to close by saying the historical significance of Union Academy can only be measured in the lives of those who passed through its halls. Bobby Mitchell McKinney, graduate of 1942, expressed it this way. She said, "Students here built lifelong values by developing positive self-worth, a strong sense of self-respect, and moral integrity." The legacy of Union Academy is defined by the proud record of accomplishments in all fields of endeavor, touching individual, family, community, vocational, and spiritual accord, making its contributions an enduring monument to the educational process. We're proud today to be partners with the Union Academy Alumni Association and Union Academy Magnet School in placement of this historical marker. We hope that it will be there for all time and for everyone to enjoy it. UA is proud, excellence in all fields, and this marker, we feel, will be another gem in the crown of the Historical Commission and Polk County, and of course, to the School Board of Polk County and Polk County Schools. Thank you, and God bless you. Union Academy alumni would like to speak, Mr. Ken Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I come on behalf of the Union Academy Alumni Association, will you please raise your hand or stand? We would just like to thank everyone involved in the process. I think for too long, our school, Union Academy, has been in the closet, and now it's beginning to come out of the closet. There have been a lot of people who have made significant contribution, not only locally, but statewide, nationally, and all over the world. And now we have in place a document that will represent the perseverance of such a great high school and what it meant to all of us here. I must say that I was a little surprised after looking at the Historical Commission and some of the evidence that they brought forth. I thought we were always the Union Academy Tigers, but I found out that during that time, a lot of schools were named after military, like the Lekel and Dreadnoughts, we were the Destroyers. And in 1932, we became the Union Academy Tigers. Also significant to me was the fact that, a lot of us don't realize, even with Barto High School, now you see the home of champions, that motto was by a Union Academy graduate by the name of Louis Johnson. So history is very important, and we thank you all for participating and giving our school the recognition it deserved with the marker. And we thank the Polk County School Board for construction, it cost a little money, and we know that you helped us in that regard. So again, on behalf of the UA Alumni Association and to all historical museum people who helped us with this, with the background, we thank you, thank you, thank you, and I'm sure that all the alumni across the world will be able to come back and see the marker that represents Union Academy High School. Thank you.
We would like for you all to take a picture. Do you all come up?
That's a good idea.
All you guys will try to be easy.
You can, you can probably do it.
Thank you all.
Now I'd like to invite Principal Dr. Kathryn Blackburn, who will come forward for a special presentation for Sleepy Hill Middle's perfect FSA scores.
Thank you very much, and good evening. I appreciate the opportunity for you to help celebrate with us, Michelle Barrios, who made a perfect score on the FSA last year, but also, I wanted to celebrate our program, our CTE program, with my teacher Amy Hamilton, and some of the students that have already passed the industry certification. I'm going to let her speak for just a moment.
Good evening. I've met several of you in person. Ms. Bird, wonderful to see you, Ms. Fields. I wanted to thank, once all, the School Board for all the effort they do to keep programs like ours alive. Special thanks to the CTE program, who has a great push on academies and job readiness and pushing STEM education in the forefront here in the county. With me today, I have some amazing students, Michelle Barrios and her older brother Jonathan Barrios, who goes to Barto IB, who is a senior, who has already been accepted to St. Leo University for cyberspace security, which he kind of got a taste for in my classroom, which was kind of strange. And then I also have Yi and his sister Sue, and Sue is also a senior at Barto IB, who went through my program and has been already accepted to UF, and she's still waiting on a few other schools to accept, and she's looking at going into the engineering field, which makes my heart so proud. The reason why I have these siblings here with me today is they've created an amazing feat. Both Sue and Jonathan were together in my class three years, and they competed all the time, top of the class, over all the subject areas, not just mine. And then they both went to IB together. And then I met both of the younger siblings when they were in fourth grade, and I kept saying, "Oh, I can't wait till you come to my class." And they both came to my class, and I was fortunate to have Yi and Michelle then come two years later, and I've had the opportunity to watch the two of them. And the two of them compete for being top of their class, all grades in all subject areas, and they both have been accepted to Barto IB, and they'll be following their brothers' and sisters' footsteps. They have all taken the industry certification for SolidWorks, which is known as CSWA, which is the SolidWorks certification for associates. It's the entry level. This test is used for Clemson University for exiting engineering students, it is used right now for freshman engineering students at UF have to take the CSWA. Sue, you're already set. So this is a professional exam, and it's proficiency, and they've all passed and received their CSWA in the history of being at the school. We've been doing this test for seven years. We've had 124 students who have passed the CSWA at Sleepy Hill Middle School, and that's thanks to the CTE people at Workforce Ed helping us, giving us guidance, and helping us with the equipment and the tools and stuff that we need. And then Yi, who is extremely proficient in CSWA, by Christmas time, he was ready, and he passed with a perfect score, just like his sister with a perfect score. And at Christmas, I said, "You want to take the CSWP, which is the next step up, which is for professionals, and it's much more rigid, it's a longer test, it's three sections," and he said, "Sure." And Sue, of course, has constantly kept in touch with me and telling me what she's doing in SolidWorks at home. And I said, "Ask your sister if she wants to take the test too." And he said, "Okay." So I got a couple days later, "Yeah, she'll take the test too." So I gave him packets and information to study, and I asked Jonathan, who is my tutor in the afternoon, and he comes after being at Barto IB all day, on the bus, he comes to my school, and he tutors students who are struggling in SolidWorks, which is highly commendable. And I asked Jonathan if he'd like to take his CSWP, and he is in the process of studying to take his CSWP also, and he'll be taking it with me because I'm getting ready to take it too. But these two came on a Saturday and together took the test, and both passed the CSWP. So these are the third set of students at Sleepy Hill Middle to excel to the professional level in industry certification. So I wanted to shout out to them, for their hard work. We have a couple things, and we have some things for you. First, for Ms. Bird, she has a lovely shirt, and it has the kids' names on it. Then, Michelle Barrios, my talented SolidWorks child, and she is, because you needed one.
Have to remember who I am.
And since you needed another one.
Oh, I really have to know who I am.
And then, because we have to find her in the dark, this one lives in the dark, for Ms. Bird.
I don't know if I can get who I am.
And then, Ms. Fields has already received hers, our students made one for her, and Ms. Cunningham. And since she works in electrical engineering, she chose a label. And Ms. Reynolds, who is communications, a phone. And Mr. Townsend, for writing, a quilt. And for Mr. Wilson, a money man. And Ms. Fortney, who is science, a speaker. And our students designed these and made these for you, and please enjoy them, and thank you so much for everything that you do for our schools and letting us shine every day. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so used to talking about SolidWorks, I forget to tell people what it's about. SolidWorks is the second world's largest 3D computer-aided design software used by professionals worldwide. It is used from everything, from mechanical engineering to literally doing animation work. It allows them to build an entire car on the screen, all the moving parts, they can test it, they can wind tunnel test, they could do actual virtual testing of the engine and do testing of the mechanical parts before they actually start even building. They're just scratching the surface of what we do, what it's capable of doing, and it's amazing to watch them work. And if you ever want to come down and see amazing students working, please feel free to walk into my room and watch the talents that are in this room, it's amazing to see. And again, thank you so much for your time today.
I'd like to make a comment before you go, to the students, we are so, so proud of you. You are going to go on and do wonderful things. The only thing I want to remind you is don't forget where your roots are from. Go out, get your education, get you the information, and consider coming back to Polk County, starting your business, and making a difference right here where your roots are from. So God bless you and good luck to each one of you, I know you're going to do wonderful things. Thank you for being here. They are, wow. Awesome, awesome.
They make me go all the time.
Unbelievable. There you go. Smile. Next, I would like to invite Steve Cochran, as you heard about CTE, the Acting Senior Director of Workforce Education, who will step forward to recognize the Farm Worker Career Development Program.
Good evening. We talked today, earlier today, about some of the great academies that we have here in Polk County, but I'd like to talk today about one of the great programs that we have in the multiple pathways. I love working in the multiple pathways. These are the program options for some of our neediest students, and they draw some of our professionals with the biggest heart. And nobody has a bigger heart than the two educators that I'm going to introduce here today. They do a fantastic job working with our migrant farmworkers and helping them fill the gaps that they've had by coming here and helping them catch up in their educational needs. And I don't just feel that way myself. This program has been recognized, and was recognized this year, as being one of the most outstanding in its region. Additionally, Ms. Nilda Soto was recognized as Program Manager of the Year for the migrant farmworkers programs in this region. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Soto. Please come up, address the board. Is Isabella going to come too?
She's going to stand right by you.
And Mrs. Isabel Leon, who also does an excellent job. Ms. Soto.
Good evening. As Steve said, I work for the Farm Worker Career Development Program. Our program has been in Polk County for 30 years, 29 of which I've been part of the program. I started as the employment specialist, and now I am the program manager for the program here in Polk County. Our program is, to me, very dear to my heart, it's one of the best programs that has ever existed, and I feel that way because it gives the opportunity to, for people that come into this country, to get the taste of the American dream. The American dream is there, but you have to work hard to get it. You have to strive and continue to work until you reach that dream, that dream is not handed out to you. And the population that I work with are usually the ones that end up dropping out of school because, and sometimes they think, "Oh, wow, you know, they can't do well in school." Why is not that? It's because they're pulled out of school to travel to other states in the country to do the work that domestic workers don't want to do, to do the work that a lot of the people in this country do not want to do. So they end up having to travel with their parents upstream. Sometimes the education level in those states is different from the education level in the state of Florida, whatever, and they end up falling back, and they continue to fall back, and the parents don't know, you know, that they have to keep them in school. So what we try to do is get those farmworker kids. And when I say farmworker kids, and I want to put this out, in order to qualify for our program, which is a federally funded program through the 167 grant that comes down to the Department of Labor, and then is funneled into the Department of Education, you have to be a U.S. citizen, a resident alien, unemployment authorized, and recently, some of you guys might be aware, of the students that have the DACA, which is the Deferred Action, the DRIMAs. Those students have become legal, so we can assist those students as well. What we do is we bring them into our program, and we put them into vocational training. The ones that have dropped out of school, get them back into getting their high school diplomas. The ones that are in high school, we try to stick with them to finish high school so that they can go ahead and further their education. And a lot of our students have been very successful in both Ridge and Travis, and also Polk State College. I'm just going to throw out some numbers, which to us means the world to you guys, it might just be numbers, but our program is, we have a plan that we have to meet every year. I've been the program coordinator for, since 2014. I used to be the employment specialist and the recruiter prior to that. When I started with the program, which was in 1990, and I'm not going to tell you my age, but the program had been in Polk County for a year. So I've been with the program since then. It's very dear to my heart, but what I wanted to share with you is that as of today, as of, well, each quarter, we're measured by the state of Florida, and we have a number of total participant enplacements that we have to have. The month ends in the 31st, we're off next week, but so far, the program has met the goal of total participant. What the total that they wanted was 153, we have 155, so we're at 101%. In placements, what was required by the state was 48 participants be employed, we're at 54. Now, we still have April, May, and June, that we're going to exceed those numbers. That's how they measure, and they choose our program in the state of Florida, is based on the numbers that we produce to the federal government, so that they can, fundings continue to follow down to different states, because this program is not only in Florida, this program is in 50 states, including Puerto Rico, because Puerto Rico is the territory of the United States. So I wanted to put out there too, that we have students that have been placed at Barto Ford that came out of Ridge and Travis, we have students doing diesel and auto body and auto mechanics there, we have LPNs in Lakeland Regional, we have surgical tech students that have been placed directly there, we have students working throughout in different jobs. But I want to introduce Isabel Camacho, she was a former farmworker, just like me. I was a former farmworker, and if one thing that kept me from getting out of farmwork was because I didn't want my kids to drop out. my kids to drop out, Isabel Camacho is an example. The work that she used to do was harvesting watermelons. And if you pick up a watermelon and pick up that watermelon all day long, you know how hard that type of work was. And she's here, she was a former participant of our program. She went to Ridge, I mean Travis, and now, you know, she's my right hand. Without Isabel, I don't know, I would be totally lost, because we've been together doing this, and I can always count on her. Not only that, Norma Miranda, she was also a former participant, and now she's working at Polk State College as a financial aid advisor. So, our students are coming back to Polk County and staying in Polk County because of programs like this. And I wanted to thank you guys for having us here and for the recognition, and we will continue to do our best to make Polk County proud. Thank you.
This concludes the recognitions for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So, this time, I would invite anyone from the public who would like to come forward and speak to any item on the agenda. So, if there's anyone who would like to speak to any item on today's agenda, please come forward and do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have four sets of minutes. The first set of minutes is Item C7, and this is approval of the amended minutes of the January 22nd, 2019 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval. Second.
So, a motion of second, any discussion? Motion on the floor is approval of the amended minutes of the January 22nd, 2019 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The second item is C8, approval of the minutes of the February 12th, 2019 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
So, a motion of second, any discussion? Motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the February 12th, 2019 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is C10, and this is approval of the minutes of the February 26th, 2019 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussion? So, motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the February 26th, 2019 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the last set of minutes is approval of the minutes of the February 26th, 2019 board meeting. And again, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussion? So, the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the February 26th, 2019 board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. I should mention that Items C45, C46, and C47 have been moved to the regular agenda. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda with the exception of those items that have been moved to the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move approval for the consent agenda for March 19th, 2019?
Second.
A motion of second, any discussion? So, at this time, so we have a motion on the floor, do we have, excuse me, we have a motion of second, any discussion? So, the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes, excuse me, approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, Madam Superintendent, we have a new administrator?
Yes, we do. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Lynda King as Director of Risk Management. Ms. Lynda King previously served as the Risk and Safety Manager for the School District of Palm Beach County. She attended St. Leo University, earning a bachelor's degree in Business Administration with the Management Specialization. She later went on to earn her Master's of Public Administration from Nova Southeastern University. Let us welcome Lynda King.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, and Board Chair and Board Members. I look forward to working with you. I look forward to serving the employees and the students of Polk County Schools. So, thank you very much.
Did you bring anyone with you?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, my brother Scott King is here. He's, he came from St. Petersburg, so he's pretty close. And then, one of my best friends and mentors, Janie Norman-Badka, has been instrumental in my whole career in public administration, and she's been very inspirational and supportive of my career, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes the announcement of new administrators for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So, with that, we'll move on to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is Item R50, and this is a motion to approve the Ziskovich Architects Contract in the amount of $1,599,015 for modernization of Mulberry High School. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussion? Mr. Townsend?
This is something I meant to ask about and forgot to. I apologize. It says Ziskovich is from Orlando, and then it says they're from Miami. Can we address that? And the reason I'm asking that is the Mulberry design's a pretty complex thing, I think. And, yeah, if they're actually based in Miami, I'm curious how we're going to address the distance and having people available to be on site regularly, so.
Angela, facilities in operation. They have two offices, Mr. Townsend. They have a main office in Miami and a main office in Orlando. We're working with the Orlando office, so we will be in close contact with them as we design. We have already had some planning meetings.
Okay, good. Sorry, I meant that.
Yes, they have two main offices.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Any further discussion? So, the motion on the floor is approval of Ziskovich Architects Contract in the amount of $1,599,015 for modernization of Mulberry High School. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is R51, and this is approval of the Fur Wegman Architects Contract in the amount of $906,318 for Davenport Elementary Modernization. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval. Mr. Chairman?
Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussion? So, the motion on the floor is approval of the Fur Wegman Architects Contract in the amount of $906,318 for modernization of Davenport Elementary. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is R52, and this is approval of the sidewalk easement at Ridge Global Academy to be given to the Polk County Board of County Commissioners. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the sidewalk easement at Ridgeview Global Academy to the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
So, a motion of second, any discussion? So, the motion on the floor is approval of the sidewalk easement at Ridgeview Global Academy to the Polk County Board of County Commissioners. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is Item C45, and this is approval of the Superintendent's Recommendations for Administrative and Instructional Personnel Actions. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussion? Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I just want to explain why I pulled these off of the consent. You know, we had a really good strategic plan meeting, I thought, a couple weeks back, and we talked a lot about work environment and climate, and we're working on some of those things. And it occurs to me that these three items are kind of where the rubber meets the road for those issues. It's where we document where our teachers and staff leave, how they transfer. There's a lot of important data there. And, you know, we're in an era of teacher shortages and staff shortages and underfunding, and I would like to, I think it's important for the public to see these on the regular agenda, because they're kind of the expression of our work climate. And, you know, I think it also underscores that as a board, we have a voting responsibility to that work climate. We were asked to approve these, and I just think that's important, and I want the public to see it. And so, that's really the extent of it, but just wanted to explain. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend, Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, I agree. And also, another reason I agreed with that is because I have requested a turnover for each school, and I think this will help us track that. So, that's all I have to add to that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Any further discussion? So, the motion on the floor is approval of the Superintendent's Recommendations for Administrative and Instructional Personnel Actions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is Item C46, and this is approval of the Superintendent's Recommendations for Non-Instructional Personnel Actions. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion of second, any discussion? So, the motion on the floor is approval of the Superintendent's Recommendations for Non-Instructional Personnel Actions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the last item is C47, this is approval of Superintendent's Recommendations for Temporary Duty Assignments. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So, the motion on the floor is approval of the Superintendent's Recommendations for Temporary Duty Assignments. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We did have a couple of emergency items. Mr. Bridges, would now be a good time to introduce those?
Absolutely. If you'd like, first, we can take up the, we had one item that was already on the agenda, request authority to advertise a public hearing to be held on April 23, 2019 during the regularly scheduled school board meeting to adopt provisions to the 2018-2019 Student Progression Plan.
Okay. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the request to advertise a public hearing to be held on April 23, 2019 to address revision to the 2018-2019 Student Progression Plan. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
So, a motion of second, any discussion? Okay, so the motion on the floor is approval of the request to advertise a public hearing to be held on April 23, 2019 to address revisions to the 2018-2019 Student Progression Plan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the two other items that you referenced, we spoke of at the work session earlier. I had occasion on Friday, a week ago, to travel with our retained counsel to Tallahassee to meet with some of the leadership from the Florida Division of Emergency Management to talk about our hurricane recovery claims with FEMA. And they gave us an idea of the sorts of things that they expected to be submitted in support of those claims that the district had not previously presented. And counsel was able to locate a firm that specializes in the sort of estimates that they are looking for, that does not only physical inspection, but thermography, including airborne thermography, which uses high-tech to detect differences in the thermal radiation from roofs that can be attributable to water that has penetrated the membranes that you can't see with the naked eye. And in any event, they, by the way, they were very complimentary of the facility's staff, including the maintenance and custodial folks who took extensive photographic records of the damage after the storm, which we've been able to retrieve and use in support. I wanted to mention that. But the superintendent had initially approved a contract within her authority to get them started, but to complete the contract is going to be more expensive. This is a bunch of engineers and tech guys, crews that come from all over the country, who are not inexpensive, but the, I guess, the way to couch this is, if we, we need to support and document our claims as very best we can in order to maximize our return both from FEMA and our insurance claims. This is the sort of information that they look for, which we previously did not have. We had initially expected it to be performed by a public adjuster, but I think it has not come to pass, so we have found somebody who can do it for us and do it quickly. So, they have teams on the ground already. One good reason for continuing is you pay travel costs as well, and they're already on site, so we can save that. But in any event, I've crafted a proposed motion for that, as well as a proposed motion to expand the representation agreement currently with Jonathan Stedham and Tina Nicholson to include obligated FEMA claims as well as administrative appeals and assistance. They're already doing administrative appeals, but this would expand it to include obligated FEMA claims as well. And I have prepared two proposed motions that I have emailed to you. The first, if you like, I can read these out, and you can vote on them individually. The first, move approval to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to execute appropriate documents to increase the authorized expenditure under the school board's professional services contract with complete contracting of Pensacola, Florida, to an amount not to exceed $1.2 million plus reasonable expenses. The scope of the contract will include providing detailed estimates of damage to Polk County campuses and district facilities that are attributable to Hurricane Irma in support of the district's insurance claims and FEMA applications.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. So, this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the item that was read into the record by Mr. Bridges. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have some discussion. Ms. Cunningham?
Mine is on the second one.
Okay. So, is there any discussion on this motion? Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, there's no guarantee that this creates a giant return, but there's a guarantee that there will be no return if we don't. And, you know, I think we have to weigh prudently the upside and downside of this. I don't think any of us are particularly happy about spending that amount of money, but it is a one-time expenditure, and the hope is that a recovery will lead to that money being reimbursed in addition to the claims. Additionally, the evidence that's being gathered, the thermal imaging, is a higher quality of evidence that we would otherwise be able to provide. So, I think it's a risk, but it's a prudent one, and I think it's probably our responsibility to execute it.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Fields?
I just want to commend our staff for being proactive and bringing this to us and being on top of it, and I'm confident that we will be able to reap some good benefits from this.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Is there any further discussion on this matter, on this particular motion? So, at this time, we'll vote on the motion that was read into the record by Mr. Bridges. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second motion is move approval to expand school board's representation agreement with Jonathan Stedham and Tina Nicholson to include obligated FEMA claims as well as administrative appeals and assistance with FEMA grant management.
Okay. So, what's the pleasure of the board as it relates to the second motion read into the record by Mr. Bridges?
So moved.
Second.
So, a motion and a second. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. My question is, on this one, we don't really have a not to exceed nor an approximate cost, so it's kind of like, unless you've got something written in the contract that's not disclosed.
Yes, we do not, it's an hourly rate contract, just like the original representation agreement. We could certainly bring a not to exceed, but typically, our legal representation agreements have to do with the services provided and don't come with an initial estimate.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Any further discussion? All right, so at this time, we will vote on the motion that was read into the record by Mr. Bridges. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chair, if I might, Ms. Cunningham, I probably should have explained that better. This one, the existing contract actually has a 3% contingent fee agreement, so if there's, it's not an hourly contract. If there's a recovery, they would receive 3%, which should be reimbursable. If there's not, they take nothing.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize.
I appreciate it.
Okay. So, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. On Saturday, March 9th, I had the opportunity to attend an health fair, and I did run into Ms. Fortney, who was there as well. But I want to thank the vendors. We had more than 65 vendors that were there providing free screenings for our retirees and our employees. So, I do want to thank them, as this is an annual event, and it was, again, very well received by our employees with a very received by our employees with a very good turnout. Also, that same day, I attended my very first, and I did not play, 2019 chess championship tournament in Barto, which I did not know we had 640 players, K through 12, from over 55 schools in the chapter, playing chess. During the tournament, over 500 students, K through 12, made it to the tournament. And I want to say thank you to John Miller and to one of the parents, Malai Shehe, who was actually one of the ones that was there making sure all 500 students were at Carver Rec Center and they were ready to play against each other. It was an amazing feat to first, get them all seated; second, to see the kindergartners playing chess, and then the 12th graders. So, next year, I told them I will come. I did the awards in the morning for the February winners, but I would do the final awards next year, so they've already sent me my invitation to come back. And we're gonna do a feature story on the program and the students, so look forward to a feature story coming out. Also, as a reminder, if you do not know, spring break is next week. All schools and district offices will be closed from March 25 through March 29 for our staff and our teachers and our students to, one, get rest, spend time with their families, enjoy this lovely weather, and yes, Ms. Cunningham, hopefully, they will read a book while they're enjoying the weather. But I wish all of our students and employees a week of much-deserved rest and we look forward to them returning back because guys is going to be fast and furious as we close out another great year here in Polk County Public Schools. The next work session will be held at 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, April 9, in the superintendent's conference room, and followed by another work session on Tuesday, April 23, at 12:30 in the superintendent's conference room, followed by the board meeting at 5:00 p.m. in the auditorium located at 1915 South Flor Avenue. That concludes my announcements for today and I wish everyone, again, a wonderful spring break and safe travels.
Thank you, Superintendent Bird. Mr. Bridges, did you have any further report?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Matthews, did you have an auditor's report? Thank you. So, we'll go to the board members' reports. We'll start with Mr. Townsend.
I think we had a very meaty work session this morning, so I would encourage people to go watch it. There was a lot that went on. I'm not gonna recap it here. A couple of weeks ago, I went to the... I think it's the CAT team. What does that stand for? Community Assessment Team? For Philip O'Brien Elementary. And, you know, my kids went to that school when it was Lime Street years and years ago. Very fond of the principal there. I just... This relates to something I'm gonna be talking about and I have been talking about quite a bit, which is the need to make sure our zones for our schools make sense on a lot of levels. And I think it's something we're probably overdue to address, but Philip O'Brien absorbed, I don't know, 150, 170 kids that really aren't affiliated with its neighborhood. It's my understanding that was related to some of the magnet programs that we most recently created. You know, I don't want to misstate the details, but every time we create a program that does away with a zone or does away with sort of a neighborhood contour, it has an effect. And the whole reason Philip O'Brien was having a community assessment team is largely because it absorbed a bunch of kids that, you know, are new to the school. And, you know, I think we need to certainly make sure we're supporting that school as much as we can. And we also need to understand the underlying realities of every special program we do has the effect to affect something else. When you're in a district this size with this many moving parts, you pull on something in one place and it affects something else somewhere else. And so, I would just urge us to start thinking real hard about how to make our zones more rational, more fair, and I'm just gonna be talking about that a lot. And, actually, I guess that's it. I don't remember what else I was gonna say. I'm kind of blurry. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, kind of to piggyback on what he said, because I have been involved with the Winter Haven Concerned Citizens Group, and one of their concerns is that they drive right by numerous schools to get to an overcrowded standball. And I've already addressed that with Ms. Bird and her and Mr. Hill are looking into it, but I wanted to say it is a problem. So, something positive, though. I've visited many of my schools in my district, three, and one common theme is their area superintendent, Michelle Townley. They all have nothing but accolades and et cetera for her, and I sit there and talk about you for about five minutes with them, at least, but you have some really great ideas I wish that we could share with other folks in maybe equal positions around the district. I just wanted to say that publicly. Speaking of accolades, I spent a couple of days with Wendy Dodge in Tallahassee, bless her heart, and it's hurry up and wait. I learned a lot. I can give a full report on that. Marissa Green, the Hall of Fame judging we did was outstanding. Polk Education Foundation, the health fair, Superintendent Bird already mentioned. I got to read Dr. Seuss to Boswell. Oh, my God, I am a secondary person and bless elementary school people's hearts. As soon as I walked in that room, I was like, oh, he spends all day in there. Like, okay. It was awesome, though. I saw Ms. Cunningham at the All County Piano Thing. That was wonderful. The Mayor's Art Club in Barto, I believe, will have a presentation I've tried to put on the agenda for next month with our local Barto schools. I'm on that little committee. I did manage to go to USF after our retreat for the mental health thing and that was very interesting and I want to, again, thank today, even though it's an exorbitant number, at least it's on the radar for our guidance counselors and mental health and social workers. It's all a matter of where we want our priorities because it's a fact that we need those. Mr. Hill, I guess I was gonna speak about... He's gonna help me with the code of conduct. We still have teachers that are struggling in the classroom. They are being attacked. They do not feel safe. Bus drivers, they have... All types of folks have reached out to me. This is why we're losing staff and it concerns me. Major concern about our teachers and staff, emotional health, not just physical, but emotional health. It seems like some are just out of control. As far as kids, and the common theme is nothing's done to them. We want them in the room for testing, et cetera, so I wanted to throw that out there for the public. Guidance counselors being used as crowd control. I'm concerned about paperwork being dumped on them, especially at the elementary level at LEAs, as LEAs. I know we've already lost a couple due to that. The wellness program, Mr. Proon said we would talk about that privately, I guess. And I have requested individual schools' turnover rates, so we can start tracking what people do well at the schools that don't have turnover rates. And I think that covers everything I didn't get to today. So sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things. We're very, very excited. Let me just say thank you to the public for passing the half-cent sales tax. We are very excited that we've got a new high school coming online up in our Davenport area, adjacent to the Davenport School of the Arts campus. And I'm very pleased to announce that there will be a community meeting, which has been set for April the 24th at the Lake Eva Community Center from 5:30 until 7:30 p.m. And I would encourage anyone who would like to hear from our district staff what's gonna be going on at that high school to please attend and be briefed on that. And certainly, if you have any ideas or suggestions, you're welcome to give us those as well. Once again, April 24, Lake Eva Center in Haynes City, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Additionally, I attended the Florida Technology Student Association Conference about two weeks ago, which was fabulous. It was held in Orlando. We had many of our Polk County schools, high schools and middle schools attend. You would be very proud of your students. A lot of them placed in the top three or top 10 for those, and I'm still waiting on those results. And once I get all those compiled and in, I hope to bring you a report here next month. So, congratulations to the students who went and placed and did so well and to those wonderful, inspiring teachers who work with them to get them ready to compete in everything from fashion design to robotics to debate to science. It's truly a STEM process with science, technology, engineering and math. It's one of the most wonderful conferences in the state and there were... It was record-breaking with over 2,000 students in attendance this year. So, kudos to all the children who did so well. Additionally, there's, you know, a lot of stuff going on this time of year. I know our arts festival that we were gonna have this past Saturday has been rescheduled. For those that haven't heard, it's on Saturday, March... Or Saturday, April the 13th in Munn Park in Lakeland. So, there is just a wonderful compilation of all types of art, visual and performing art from all of our students around the county. So, if you get a chance to join us, it always makes for a wonderful day. Yes, I attended the piano concert with Ms. Fortney. We also have had wonderful productions. I know at Harrison, I attended Sunday in the Park with George, which was a very different play that I certainly wasn't expecting when I walked in the door, but a lot of the visual things that were done there were just so out of the box. It was just thoroughly enjoyable. And upcoming, we have the Crucible and the Theater Department coming up April 5, 6 and 7. I know Davenport School of the Arts is gonna be performing Mary Poppins Jr., the first weekend in May, last weekend in April and first weekend in May, and that should be a whole lot of fun. And I'm sure there's a plethora of activities going on in all of our schools, so if you get a chance and you can come out and support some kids doing what they do best, whether it be arts, sports, you name it, please attend. Or chess tournaments, maybe can learn how to play chess, Madam Superintendent. Yeah? For next year, you never know. So, yeah. But anyways, and once again, you kind of stole my thunder, but I'm gonna say it again. Anytime we have a chance to have time off, I always encourage students... We have a wonderful library cooperative in Polk County. If you can have your child check out some books and read, read, read. It makes such a difference when they return back to school after spring break. So, I hope everybody gets some R and R over this next week and please stay safe, most importantly. Thank you. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm gonna apologize in advance because this time of the year is so, so busy, as everyone has said. I also got to read Dr. Seuss at Boswell Elementary. However, I had the pleasure of apparently going behind Mr. Pitts. So, I've heard that he was great, so I... The kids told me I had a very high standard to live up to when I walked in the door, so... But I think I met it. Secondly, just to go off of what Ms. Fortney said, almost all of my elementary schools are in Ms. Townley's area and I spend half of my week, I think, talking about how wonderful Ms. Townley is because they love you. So, whatever you are doing, keep it up because you are... Everyone that reports to you absolutely loves you and thinks that you're wonderful. So, thank you. I also got the opportunity to attend the Polk Academy Advisory Board, which they had their in-service-out-service that Mr. Cochran talked to us a little bit about earlier, and it was incredible to see people from all over the nation coming to see what we're doing here in Polk County and just talking to the people who are not from here. They were absolutely blown away at what our academies were doing and the students that were presenting to them, not industry people or teachers. It was kids that were coming up and presenting to them and telling them exactly what they're doing and what they've learned. And it was absolutely incredible to see other people across the world tell us, okay, we have to replicate this in Arkansas or in Nashville or in other places, and Chattanooga was one of them. But, so it was a really cool experience to watch that. This is a little bit of my Theater Winter Haven hat, but I, as a chaperone, got to go into schools last week with Drama Time Live, which was a partnership that Theater Winter Haven was able to partner with the school district. Beth Cummings worked incredibly closely with us, telling us how we could make this possible, but to go into second-grade classrooms and connect the arts to literacy. We brought two fables into each of our classrooms. We had a couple of staff members that got to come in and see how we were doing that, but it was groups of three students going in and showing kids that you can make reading really, really fun. They read Tortoise and the Hare and the Bear and the Bees, and the kids actually... You know, they would ask for more... What the moral was. Well, they had just finished fables the week before, so every kid was able to tell us what the moral was, what the parts of the story were, stories were, and it was just an incredible experience to watch the second graders. But even more so, I had a parent of one of our students that is a high school student email me this week to say our... This was my... My son came home and said this was the best week of his entire life, getting to go into these schools and interact with kids and see how different classrooms worked, that he loved it. And so, I think from both ends, it was a very successful partnership. We were able to go into 30 classrooms in three days. So, it was a really incredible program and we're hoping to expand it next year.
That's great.
We also, in Winter Haven last week, had a guitar concert at the Ritz Theater that was sponsored by Polk County Schools. Beth Cummings also coordinated this, and I am going to say his name wrong, but I believe it is T.Y. Zhang. He came in all last week and met with students at Jute School of the Arts and Winter Haven High School. He is a classical guitarist that graduated from Juilliard, and he put on a free concert at the Ritz Theater that Tuesday night. Beth, when we were coordinating it, said, oh, there'll probably be, you know, 50, 60 people there. There were 150 people, and the headline in the ledger the next day was, "How do you get to Carnegie Hall through Winter Haven's Ritz Theater?", which is a pretty incredible headline for the school district. So, I think that that was... Kudos to the Fine Arts Department there as well. And then, lastly, I just want to thank Katie Worthington and the Chamber because they have totally embraced our platform for our legislative platform. I was in Tallahassee last week with Katie and she stepped into a couple of meetings with us theater-related, but every time the education platform comes up and she was able to so eloquently ask questions and show that the business community supports everything that we're saying and they just want to know how they can help. So, I just wanted to make sure we are recognizing the fact that they're willing to help us and are going above and beyond to do so, especially with our friends in Tallahassee. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fields?
We have a lot of great things going on in our school district. Very excited and I'm so proud to be a part of the Polk County Public Schools. Well, I think everyone, for the most part, knows that we've been very blessed to have two people recognized over the last few weeks as outstanding administrators. Christopher Roberts, Barto Middle School, was named the 2019 District Principal of the Year, and he goes to the state now for consideration. We're very excited about that. And then, Ms. Suzie Nelson, Assistant Principal of Chain of Lakes. She has been named the 2019 District Assistant Principal of the Year, and she will go forth as well. And so, I guess my question is, and I don't really need an answer today, is what are we going to do to honor both of these outstanding administrators? I'm sure Ms. Bird already has something in mind. I just think that this is something that is very noteworthy and we are really, really proud of both of them. Also, wanted to reiterate what I said this morning about our Head Start Policy Council members. We talked about the Head Start audit that was done by the federal agency and it was just amazing to me. I've been to three meetings now representing the board and how impressive our parents are and how committed they are to our students and to our Head Start program and the ability to speak in a public setting, to me, is just so impressive because it's not easy... to speak in a public setting, to me, is just so impressive, because it's not easy speaking in public, and how confident they are. And I mentioned to Ms. Free that we need to have a video with the testimonies from our parents, because they have amazing stories on how Head Start has really benefited not just their students, but also, not just their children, but also their families. So I can't say enough about being able to serve on the policy committee, for the policy council, rather, for the Head Start program. Also, I want to commend Brian Andrews and his team at Lawton Child's Middle Academy for their first-ever Black History Festival that was held recently. It was a great day. Ms. Byrd was there along with Mr. Hill and other staff from the school district, and the kids were just having so much fun, and they really loved the food trucks. Yep, they really did. And so this is going to be an annual event, I believe, and so we're just very pleased with that. And then I think everyone benefited from the school board retreat that we had recently with Dr. Freho being our facilitator and looking at our goals and making some adjustments, but overall knowing that we're making some positive strides and that we are on track for our students, because at the end of the day, that's why we're all here, for the benefit of our students. And then getting a chance to go to Branscombe Auditorium with the famous text collector, Joe Tetter, for our annual Polk County Kids Tag Art Ceremony. Mr. Townsend was there as well, along with Ms. Byrd. And to see the students' artwork and to see the parents proud and the students proud and being able to give awards to them, and the money that's generated from that initiative going directly back into the classrooms, to me, is just amazing. And we can't, I can't personally thank Mr. Joe Tetter enough. And for anyone who might be interested to know, Mr. Tetter can actually play the drums pretty well, so he's very talented, and he is a product of our school district. And then lastly, but certainly not least, had a chance to go to Jesse Keen to read my Dr. Seuss book. My favorite book is Green Eggs and Him, and ran into Ms. Tedra. She was there reading as well. And so we just have a lot of great things going on within our school district, and I think that we should all be proud. I know that I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. And that concludes our comments.